I guess I won last night, I hope. I haven't talked to anybody.
You won last night. I voted for you.
Good morning, everyone. Is everybody ready this morning? We appreciate everybody joining us for the November 9th council meeting. We appreciate you all being here. To get our meeting started, let's do a roll call. Tony Dungeon?
President.
I'm Marilyn McCullough.
Present.
Mike Myers via telephone.
Present.
All right, everyone is here. If we can say the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands by nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
You're fine.
I need my space.
Meeting minutes from the October meeting, has everybody had a chance to review? Any changes or questions or comments? Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So moved.
So moved by Tony Dungeon, second by Tom Schaefer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion passes unanimously. Judge, good morning.
I have a couple of things, actually. One is the request to have payment for overtime hours for Andrea Burris, who's my chief court reporter. She's been accumulating these for quite a long time. And at the budget, when we added a court reporter position, starting in January, I had another court reporter that took another job at Bar Reeve, and I got two positions that I'm going to be trying to fill. And like everybody else, hopefully I'll be able to fill them and start training some folks as well. I would like to point out, I think we had a brief issue in regards to some ADA training and requirements and what was going to be the result if employees did not do that. And we had sent, I believe Judge Smith had sent an email indicating once again that court employees are court employees, not county employees. The county pays for the court. The court's set hours, the court sets standards for their personnel, the court sets HR policy, basically. What we have always done is tried to cooperate as closely as we can with the county handbook and the county requirements and filling out these multicolored charts in regards to personal time. And that's a convenience for me. I don't have to develop a HR handbook. But I do want to always be clear that there is a separation between the branches of government. So we're using the basic pay on this. This was recommended, I think through the auditor's office and Andrea herself. So that's the first request. So that's 387 hours at $10,003.95. The other request.
So what you just said, I think, is that that's just going to be straight. It's not really true overtime, it's straight time.
Right.
Okay.
Right. Yeah, that's not time and a half, that's not... And strictly speaking, my employees are not hourly workers. There are requirements, there are times when we're doing trials and other things where they have mandatory overtime. We work till we get our work done. It's just a way, this particular situation of compensating a lot of extra work that was accumulated.
Thank you.
It's just this year.
You know, I'd have to look at that, see whether that was, any of that came from the year before as well. The second request is a transfer from the pauper attorney fee fund, which is money that we try to collect from people that have court-appointed attorneys and some folks that don't. I transfer almost all fine, criminal fine money to the pauper attorney fee fund. I explain every time that I do that, that the reason that I do it is if I leave it as a fine, we have to send that money to the state government, and then they don't send us a whole heck of a lot of that money back. So, but I also want to be upfront, in case the state ever wants to complain about it. Each and every time I've done that, I've gone on the record as saying what that is and why we're doing that. A lot of people can't afford to hire an attorney, but they can afford to make some payments. So over the years, I've tried to make that a condition of probation on occasions or part of a fine that they can pay a little bit towards it. I believe it's important with people that are in recovery because it allows them to make amends to people that you cannot send a letter to or you can't meet. So I think it's a twofold process. But we accumulate quite a bit of money on that. There's been some controversy in the past of whether that's asking for additional money. It's not. It's just that it accumulates in that fund and then we apply it towards the attorney's fees. We are going to have some jolts in the attorney's fees. We had a firm that was not billing us regularly, even though we had notified them and Judge Smith's court had notified them. And what their internal problems were, I don't have any idea. It's not that they didn't do the work, but those bills will start coming in. And so I'll have a little bit of a bump to pay there. After like the third time we told them, thought, well, if you don't want to bill for the work you're doing, that's not really my problem.
Will we have that done by the end of the year, Judge, or not?
I don't know. I've heard that the firm is kind of dissipating, so I don't, but that's not occurred yet. I told them to get their bills in as they could develop them. So I'm hopeful that I'll have a handle on it. But certainly I think we ought to have a handle on it by the time we have our next budget to just see whether... I think we're going to be okay. We have some money left in this fund as well. But that's another one of those things that I just kind of don't control. One other thing that I guess I'd bring up now that we're here in regards to money. I do have three pending cases that are going to require psychiatrist's evaluation. That's two per case, and that runs about three grand and up per evaluation. One of the persons presented in court in a striking manner that I think clearly needs a evaluation. The other one threatened me directly in court repeatedly, which I held him in contempt for. But, and has also exhibited some behaviors. And then the third one was a kind of a conventional request by the counsel and then followed up by my observations of that person. So I've just given you a heads up there because in the past, sometimes we've been able to transfer monies around to put in that, and we may or may not be able to cover all that. But I'll get that to you when it comes up.
Any questions for Judge Sibeky? Do I have a motion? We'll approve them both in the super fees.
Move to approve the two requests.
I have a motion by for to approve both requests. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Marilyn McCullough. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposition, same sign? Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Judge.
Thank you.
Hi, Julie. Salary ordinance.
Morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
I had just requested to transfer, I believe it's $5,000, out of our part-time line item into our overtime to cover us to get through the end of the year with short staffing. We're having to, like everybody else, fill in with a lot of overtime. And I like to give them the option of taking that in the overtime pay instead of the comp time.
How is your staffing?
Currently, I have a new person starting on Monday, so that would leave us down four full-time positions.
Four.
So, still two in the training process, so that's a, we'll see if it's going to work or not. It takes time to tell if they're going to make it or not, so. Got feelers out there, but it's just the shift work and...
You have four openings, but two in training?
Well, I got four openings. That doesn't include the two in training. That's, they're technically in spots, so.
Oh.
Yeah.
You're pretty thin, then.
Yeah. I've had three people leave over this past year to go make $27 an hour elsewhere, so. I can't fault them for that. I can't compete with that, so. But, you know, we've got feelers out there trying to get people hired, but it takes a certain type of person to be able to sit in there and take those calls and be able to do the job, so.
Do I have a motion to approve that request?
I'll make that motion.
All right. Motion by Mike Sprinkle, second. Second by Tom Schaefer. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, same sign? Thanks, Julie. Appreciate it. Thank you.
I would request that you move back up to number three for the 2023 salary ordinance.
Okay. All right, in your packet, you have the 2023 salary ordinance. Is there any questions or comments concerning that after your review?
Pretty much what we did at budget time.
Correct.
Any motion on that?
Any motion to approve the salary ordinance as presented?
So moved.
So moved by Tony Dungeon. Do I have a second? Second by Darren Holder. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposition, same sign? Motion passes unanimously. Save that for last. All right, Gary. Salary ordinance amendment.
Yep. I want to move that fund from the Sheriff's Department out of Adam Hunt's salary. He was on workman's comp for several months this year, and you'd move that into the jail overtime budget. Remember correctly, budget time, now $7,000 off of that. So I'm not really asking for new money, I'm just asking for that to be moved so we can make it through the end of the jail.
Any questions or can I entertain a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Tom Schaefer, second. Marilyn McCullough, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposition, same sign? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have up is adult probation user fees. This is Beth O'Brien. To move a little bit, $1,000 over to cover some fees.
That West Boggs?
The West Boggs thing.
I like jumping around.
Keeping...
Keep you on your toes.
See, I'm awake.
Right. You guys wouldn't let me sing?
You're past.
Any songs this morning?
You're past. Which one we doing?
We're doing the West Boggs General Fund.
Okay.
This is to cover the wage increases that they presented.
Holding on taxpayer money.
Right. We've cautioned them, be aware of their budget.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion for this?
I'll move.
Mike Sprinkle, motion to approve, second by Tom. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposition, same sign? Motion passes unanimously.
I want her down.
Kelly. We want to go in order.
Good morning, counsel.
Good morning.
I am here to make requests to move some funds and some leftover grant money. I'm to the end of one of our COVID-19 vaccine administration grants and want to shift it into another line to pay our part-time nurse. Still works Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and still paying her with a grant, three years now.
Any questions for Kelly? Have a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Darren Holder makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Tony Dungeon. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, same sign? Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Kelly. Appreciate it. Now we have Beth O'Brien's request, $1,000 to transfer for part-time employee categories.
I move, approve the transfer of funds.
I have a motion by Tom Schaefer to approve.
Second.
Second by Mike Sprinkle. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposition, same sign? Motion passes unanimously. Scott Schnair.
It was one I couldn't get.
Looks like he's asking for $3,590 for extra help.
Actually couldn't open. Can't see that.
I can't see it either.
I couldn't either.
I couldn't either.
Well, if you go back, it's in the file. It's just not linked, but you can see it. He has some extra part-time help he wanted.
Yeah. Looked at it last week. Up here today, but I did look at it last week when I got this.
Those were $3,590?
Yeah.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Marilyn McCullough to approve. Do I have a second? Second by Tom Schaefer. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposition, same sign? Motion passes unanimously. All right, if everybody looks at the 2023 council calendar, any opposition to the date selected?
We typically follow the state's calendar.
Yeah. The only thing, just something to think about is maybe having the budget hearings the last August, if we can possibly, and then a work session maybe after the 1st of September and then adoptions sometime thereafter or whatever. But I mean, we don't, I'm not suggesting a change to what this calendar is today, but just something to think about, if any way possible.
Well, I think if we do like the Wage Committee, we move that up a little bit, I think we could accommodate that. I think that's the thing is, we have, you know, that committee that meets and then they present to everybody else to make their changes. And you don't think that's an issue, starting some of that process.
Correct. And typically, we have deadlines that we have to meet with the state, and then we start going backwards with our dates on when we have to get everything scheduled and allow us some extra time in case the state comes back and makes any recommendations for changes. Yeah, for the setup of that, we can definitely look into that.
Busy in the fall?
It will be this fall. No, just a little bit.
We'll take that under advisement, Mike, and we see no problem with that.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Everybody in agreement with what Mike presented?
Yes.
Yep.
With that, do I have a motion to approve the calendar as presented?
I'll make that motion.
All right. Motion by Mike Sprinkle, second.
Second.
Second by Tony Dungeon. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposition, same sign? That passes. Thank you. All right, now we have appointments that we need to make and contact.
Have all these people agreed, serving it?
That's who we have to contact.
Okay.
Some of them are one-year terms, some of them are two-year terms, some of them are four-year terms, so.
If someone would like to take my spot, I don't see Tom's name on here anywhere, that they would like to take my spot on the Southern Indiana Development Commission. It's a good organization, and I've been there for a while and probably getting a little stale for them. So if you'd consider that.
Do we have, do we have? Because it shows that me, I'm on there too, but I've never, I didn't know I was on there.
Congratulations.
First time I've seen it.
Would you like to take that appointment, Tom? They meet quarterly. You got four meetings a year?
Or where is it?
It travels around Oden Community Building, Forage Ground, Lagodee, Washington Community Center, and then we've met at Westgate before.
Just for a year, I'll do it, yeah. I am on the Help Committee, and that's been taking a lot of time, for sure.
If anybody else wants to.
Yeah. Don't let me stand in your way.
I don't want to put you in the spot or anything, but I've been there for a while.
I would do it.
Okay.
All right, we have agreed that...
It's interesting, the stuff that comes through there, really.
Tom will take Mike's spot in the SADC. I can contact Natalie. I think Mike Myers stated he'd stay with the EDC position.
Mike Myers?
Yes.
Are you still going to do the EDC position? Hey, Mike.
He said he may have to leave.
Okay. Surely did.
He said that he would stick with that position, so.
All right.
We need to check on the park board when that was set and see if I need to contact Mike or if it's still in process. Or is this because it's up in four years? It's up? Okay, so we'll get a message to Mike. I'll get ahold of Mike Haley, make sure he wants to do RDC again.
You and I can split them up.
Yeah, we can split them up. Well, we'll just do that. That way it makes it easy. So Tony, I'll take him. And now let's look at the appointments that the council is currently on. I'm on RDC. I'll continue that process, if everybody's okay with that. Tony, you stay with the county advisory plan?
Well, somebody wants to. Okay.
Bennington Levy Board, Mike?
I'll stay there.
Very good. SADC, Tom will be taking that. Community Corrections Advisory, Marilyn, you've been doing excellent with that. You good with that?
I'm good with that.
Awesome. Like I said, Mike said he would stay with the EDC. Darren, White River Alliance, SADC, that you didn't know you were on.
You know.
How you do? Are you good with that?
I guess. And the mental health.
Right.
Yeah.
So we will take those, the ones that the council are on with the change from Tom. We'll make a motion to approve those. The rest of them, Tony, I'll split up, and then we'll go from that. So do we have a motion to approve the council member positions? Have a motion to approve those?
I'll make that.
All right. I have a motion by Mike Sprinkle, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Tony Dungeon. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. We'll get those other ones knocked out, Tony, and then we'll present those to the next meeting. Great. Thank you. All right, next I have Superior Court overtime.
Thought we did that earlier.
Yeah, we did that one. That's the same one. Coroner autopsies. There's a running low in funds. Autopsies are currently 16% over the total of last year's autopsies. Unsure how many deaths will occur between now and the end of the year.
When, what constitutes to require an autopsy?
Looking at me?
I'm just looking in that direction.
Suspicious death of any kind. Suspicious death of any kind, uh, you know, car crashes, pretty much anything where the person, I mean, obviously if they're elderly and they pass away at home or in hospice, those type of things. But if there's questions, they do an autopsy, so. There's really no way around that in today's world. What's an autopsy cost? Pardon? You know how much one costs? I've heard three grand an autopsy, but don't quote me on that. That's just what I've heard. They're having issues finding places to do autopsies. The one that they use quite often, he's getting ready to retire, and he's out of bed for Dr. Jacoby. And he's overworked. Been to retire, I know, so. It's hard telling, what I'm telling you is it's hard telling where we're going to have to go in the future years to do autopsies.
What that price is going to be, because it's going to...
A lot of times, you got to take the body to Terre Haute, Indy, or Vandenberg County. Of course, then we got to follow along, so, if it's that type of... But I don't have the actual numbers, but...
Thank you, Gary.
I'll make that motion.
All right. I have a motion by Tony Dungeon to approve them of the additional appropriation.
I just know from years past, we've questioned the amount of autopsies that's come in here over the years, and it seems like that there's just a lot of them done. It's, and it's, you know, it came back the same way every time, that, you know, they're doing them and they're not doing them just to be doing them. It's a needed thing, so I know 10, 12, 15, 20 years ago, we've asked the same question, but there's just a lot of them being done. I will second that motion.
I have a second by Mike Sprinkle. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposition, same sign? Motion passes unanimously. Gary should have stayed up there. Yeah, Gary. This is from the commissioners' meeting. We're just paying for this.
The air conditioning, the air conditioning, yeah. Whenever the new air conditioning units were put in, they found, as their installation, they found these problems, and they fixed them as they went along. So that's an additional, that comes out cumulative capital. That's where the air conditioning project was paid for. So that's where I'm asking this to be paid out of, the commissioners approved it.
Do I have a motion?
Was that part of the...
Bid spec?
Yeah.
No, this is problems they found as they were installation.
Part of the routine maintenance agreement we have, or no?
No.
This is the installation. While they were installing, they're like, oh, this is broke too. We need to fix it.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that system, it didn't work right. It's, the one we got now is much better. And I really think we're going to find this more efficient.
And in the future, now we have the maintenance that covers that stuff.
Yeah.
But this is what they found, like, if air comes through that, the door was probably wired open for a reason, and it's just been, yeah, they found problems. And the system was installed in '04, so.
Any other questions for Gary? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Tom Schaefer to approve, second. Second by Darren Holder. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposition, same sign? Passes unanimously. Thanks, Gary.
Thank you. Am I still up?
Yep. C-911.
Numbers are getting bigger. Right, I know. But I think she designed it like that, so. This we presented to the 911 board several, a few years back. We installed a new radio system for our office and for county highway. That was a three antenna system. Did it as cheaply as we possibly could, and that system has never worked up to par. We had the installation people, VEI, tweak and tweak and tweak, and we got words exchanged. And we had them come down and they improved it a little bit, but the three antenna system is not pulling its weight. And Mike Dyer's here, he's from the company that's looking to do this upgrade to our radio system. And he'll explain it further, because he knows all the ins and outs, so.
And full disclosure... And full disclosure, Tony and I have been a part of this.
Yeah, yeah, they're on the.
Well, first I'd like to thank, uh, Jennifer and Carmen for helping me try to get there with a PowerPoint, uh, display, but we could not get it to work. Uh, it's funny and ironic that we're talking about an I P network issue and here I'm having an I P network and not being able to send my email through my phone or through your Wi-Fi here. Um, so if you don't mind, I try to improvise, I just have a few slides, maybe four or five slides, just to kinda show you. Sometimes I'm, I'm a visual person to where I can't take you up a hundred foot tall water tank and show you these. So we've taken pictures to show you some of the issues that we've seen. Um, do I have your permission to approach?
Absolutely.
The council and, and try to play this, um, PowerPoint and describe a little bit about what we've got. So, off the main system where you can see errors where it says major.
There's one of them.
These are when we look at the I P system about errors, error messages. And we'll get a report, so the, the system itself has a computer log, that we can go back to try to say, okay. Look, we see, okay, these I P. Failures. So, you know, that's the start of saying, okay. Looking into. Are all linked when I say I P. Not using fiber. Internet connection. Drive it as a closed. Two is a. Show you that, this is the point-to-point microwave dish that's on the Washington, uh, that's just kind of a description of what that looks like, pointed at another tower. So, under the investigation with it, what was put in, what I would consider a consumer-grade I P. Uh, showing fracture of what the equipment is, the total cost for this dish and point-to-point microwave, uh, that's on your Washington tank is five hundred. You can see difference there of, uh, say this was like off the shelf, hey, somebody wants to set up a camera system in a shed or a barn on their farm or something like that. Not right. Public safety. This is what I would consider what's being posed, where you can see the difference in the equipment, dishes, caliber of equipment, when we put in a microwave system, uh, we spec it and design it to be what we call five-nine reliability. Network is at ninety-nine. I was wanting to add it for a curve. So when that has to do with public safety, it's having to communicate. Having a network where this antenna's not working on our side or this antenna's on our side.
So would that be a point-to-point system too?
Yes, yes. And what I wanted to kinda show you is here is errors. Here's what we're proposing. Sometimes that's kinda hard to show you in a picture, so don't mind.
Gary, and, and to clarify and kinda move it, this is also bridging the gap that you currently have, right?
Right.
Yeah, there, there, there's an area where service is less than desirable and this covers those gaps in the county where currently there might, there's not service.
So you can, you can see the difference between what a really good commercial-grade public safety versus R F.
Right. Uh, V E I blames Wendell Wise because he's not with us.
So some, some of my last slide, um, will show you comparisons between what we're proposing and, and then you see this, the small slide down there, this is the current dish. Can you look at the dish to where it does not have what we call an eye shield or a radome over it? See it's got a little, uh, horn that sticks out like a pedestal? Well.
Birds like that.
That's a problem, yeah. If I was a bird, uh, on the water tank, I'd use that as a perch and now all of a sudden my microwave system has to go through some more flash. Rupted it. The other part about that is ice. Storms or ice storms and it gathers in that.
Anybody who's had, uh, satellite service at home knows when the snow packs on, it doesn't work very well.
So unfortunately, coming into situations like this, this is a non. Can't repair it and I can't make $500 public safety.
Mike, Mike, you would agree that we've tweaked this system as much as it could possibly be tweaked?
We have tried, and one of the other problems too. One of it is one of these. Really trying to hit that point where we've re, find, so part of this is one issues. There's still maybe reliable network, but we find the microwave where the maximum part of that has to be microwaves. But if I was gonna take you on top of that water tank, look out over the horizon, you would probably have because round that, we're all thinking driving from here. Oden is flat. That's not what's happening, so when you have a leak, it's grounded and you have these two towers, it's not gonna have our way. So with part of this fight. I might. Wish I could have had a PowerPoint on there.
Appreciate you being here, I know from my experience sitting on the operations board, he's gone into detail about this process. Now it's the presentation for the money part, right? But, I mean, we spent probably two hours in one meeting going through all the caveats and the inputs and outputs. It's definitely an upgrade we need for, for public safeties.
So is this system guaranteed to work?
The microwave system, like I said, when you deal with, okay, first of all, as a contractor, I'd say the worst thing that I ever wanted to do is come in and take over, take over somebody else's problem.
Right.
Right?
Right.
But to do a diagnosis to say, okay, I can't fix what's there unless I still with it. Almost like building a foundation in a house, right? I gotta get the foundation available and then here's your problem. If this person didn't care or, or workmanship or quality in this, who's to say that it wasn't with this? So I can't tell you that until I get a stable network on there. Um, but I will say, if, if you're gonna put a, a public safety white, which, little background on us, we put in your nine one one system this year. So we were your vendor to do that. Uh, been in business thirty-three years, uh, maintain over five hundred police and fire departments around Indiana and Kentucky, uh, fourteen nine one one dispatch centers. Um, I'm, I'm the architect and builder all in one, so, um, which is a good thing. And there's no finger pointing that goes from this person or this person. Um, with designing it, like I said, I can only get to one level and if I say yes, I can guarantee you a stable five-nine reliable net I P network, which you're gonna need anyway. Can we then say, okay, can we use this, tweak it, now that we have a stable network, can we use what we have? Or do I get involved with like, uh, um, but it's the first step and, um, trust me, I would rather not have to, to, I wish I could design it from the beginning and put it in, but in this case, we, we have tried. I, I can't tell you how much of my time and labor is trying to be able to use some inadequate equipment. Just because I wanna be able to have the sheriff to be able to not be down with communication. So, um, but I can't do it, I mean, just, there's too many other engineering issues that are here that I just can't make it reliable.
I just, I just wanna make sure we're not spinning our wheels again, cause we went through this process once and.
Radio's something that always evolves.
Yeah.
Well, I can, I can tell you, tell you this, and I appreciate that question. Um, but all contractors aren't the same. So, uh, please don't categorize me in that, in that light.
No, that's, that's not the intent.
No, no, but I understand.
But we're spending taxpayer money.
Totally understand, but the problem is, this is the reality of what you have and we can't make it work. I mean, I, I, it just is not gonna happen. The vendor who put it in has worked three years to try to, to make it work. And, um, part of that has to deal with, I'm just being honest with you, that I'm, I'm not gonna promise you that there's not gonna be other things after we get the network going. Cause again, like I said, if they did this, how do I not know that they didn't do that? If they used that same mental philosophy, lack of workmanship, lack of components to get the system up. Um, but, um, yeah, I, I would, I would, I would guarantee that as far as my microwave network and work and how we work is, um, we, on this seventy-two thousand dollar microwave system, uh, you get a bill after we've done the work. And it's been vetted and it's in, so that gives you motivation to say, hey, it's not working right, I'm not gonna pay you till it's right. That's how we establish that trust factor is, you don't pay a dime until the work is one hundred percent completed. And I will say this, I'm taking a hit on some of this equipment because we gave this quote back in June. And we all know with supply chain issues, I can maybe get a microwave R F deck, but I might have trouble, which I ain't, I do have trouble sourcing two dollar a foot clad network cable. Especially when you start dealing with microwave, that you had a hurricane in Florida, that now a lot of this product is going down to utilities and, and other entities to try to get their electrical grid network back up. Um, I can tell you that this process will probably take six months. Part of that has to deal with the weather, the time, we also, part of our design is having to weld a mount on top of a water tank, which has to be, and we're going into winter time, so we have to, to base how we can work up on tops and rig up on top of water tanks and towers, uh, due to the weather, and weather conditions, supply chain, all of that. But it's a, it's a step that I can say that the, that the alternative is, there's not many, there's no, there is no alternative instead of fix that up.
But Gary is, is so as far as, without getting down into the weeds, but are we basically replacing all the dishes, all the, everything?
We're, we're upgrading the three towers that we have and we're adding one.
Oh, adding one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Posey County's got five towers. I, I, we've been trying to get by with three. We got one on the big water tank up at Painted Acres.
You're getting seventy or eighty or ninety.
We can't talk from Melonora.
Thousand farmers.
Hit that tower. Even though you're standing there and looking up at it, I don't know why, but, so we're gonna move that over to, uh, Al Prairie and that'll catch.
I guess, cause I was wondering, cause when he said,
Yeah.
we're, we're at seventeen on one and then we're gonna bring them down.
So that, by moving that, by moving that from Painted Acres to Al Prairie and then putting one over at Boggs, the new ad's gonna be over in the Boggs area, north south, and then the Candy Strip Water Tower out here on Sugarland Hill.
The, uh, water tank.
There at Boggs.
That's how you get. Partly, another part of that is your rating. Towers in the dorm is like way so when we design this public safety at me officers.
The last.
I from. And so we can just try and find the way we're trying to.
Julie can attest to how our system was not very good.
Alright, do I have, uh, before we go, let's have, well, Julie's a different thing, but it comes out of the same fun.
Comes out of the same fun, yeah.
Let's go ahead and cover that one.
Appreciate you keeping your guns holstered while I talk to you.
Good morning.
Alright. I kinda wanted to go before Gary, but that didn't happen, so, um. I have requested an additional appropriation of three thousand six hundred ninety-one dollars and seventy-three cents to be added into the equipment line. I am looking at purchasing a software program for dispatch. Um, this was presented to the nine one one board, the operations board. Um, I sent them some links so they were able to, um, view some videos on the program. Basically what this software is gonna do is help me in training new employees. It's gonna help, um, questioning of people that call in, make it more, um, across the board, that, you know, Marilyn calls in or Tom calls in, you're, you're gonna be getting the majority of the same questions. Right now, if someone would call in for a medical emergency, that your family member was having a heart attack, I gotta pick this up off the floor where it's stuck and find chestbands.
I tried this during our operations board meeting, so I said, somebody called with a heart attack. This is a flip chart, okay, so this is what they have to look at. Then you gotta look at this thing, and, and you have seconds, right? And you gotta slide down and find it, and then you gotta ask more questions, and then you gotta slide down and find it. There's so much time wasted there.
And then if you, they answer a question one way, you may have to flip to a completely different card.
You might have to flip back again, so this would all be computerized right in front of you on the screen. To me, it's a no-brainer.
And with our new training requirements that are placed, um, down from the state, um, nine one one board, which helps fund this account, um, we have to be, this is just for medical calls only. We now have to be certified in protocols for police calls and fire calls, so that would be an additional two of these, so we're looking at twelve to fifteen of these laying around in the dispatch room. And they're clunky and they're hard to get to whenever seconds count. So, um, like Matt was saying, this will be all computerized, it will pop us through the next questions. This is gonna aid in getting more information for our first responders, um, cause sometimes in those emergency situations, things may slip through the cracks and questions may not get asked, just because we're trying to get as much information as we can, but sometimes other questions aren't asked. You know, this is gonna benefit EMS, fire and, and law enforcement altogether.
This is kinda one of those questions like we did with the compression machines, it's a no-brainer. I mean, if your family member calls, you want boom, 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 boom service. I mean, it's, it's minor compared to the cost. I mean, it's, it's minor compared to the cost.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Tony Dunsen. We'll, we'll take both of these into consideration, both of these. So do I have a motion for both of these, Tony? Motion for both of these for Tony Dunsen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Tom Schaefer. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Same sign? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Another reason to wonder why you're four people down.
They gotta look through that book. If you guys get a chance after the meeting, try to see what you can do on that thing. I, I spent time because I'm like, well, you can't do it in a timely manner. You just can't. I mean, they're doing great what they're doing.
Three that they lost to Center Point Veterans. Reliable. I'm not saying everybody else over there is reliable or good, but the three that they lost.
All right, next on the agenda, we have motor vehicle highway fuel. Eighty thousand dollars. Chris would be attending, but I don't think Chris made it this morning.
I'm sure that with the increase in fuel since the first year that. This is probably pretty minor for them, although it's major on here, but they, they need the fuel to operate, so.
Correct.
Diesel really hasn't moderated much.
No.
Yeah, that's the thing. Most of their trucks are diesel.
Two dollars a gallon more at the fuel gas station. I would move to approve this.
I have a motion by Mike Sprinkle to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Darren Holder. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Same sign? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, for the public defender, we talked with Judge on that one. We pass that one. So from the health department, transfers, Kelly.
I believe it's the same one that I spoke of earlier.
It is, it's, yeah.
It's grant funds that I need to be transferred to another line to pay wages, hopefully to use all of the funds and close it out.
I already did it.
The one early on was in regards to your salary ordinance.
It was the salary ordinance.
The part time to up the salary ordinance to fourteen thousand five hundred. This is to actually put the four, forty-five hundred dollars into the part time line to use.
Yes.
So the first, we did it reverse. We can go back to the other one if we wanted to. We did the transfer first.
Yes.
And then we didn't do the salary ordinance.
Do you have any questions?
The issue is they link a little different, so the links are different. So when we link to it, we get the forty-five hundred dollar link.
It is different.
The transfer is for forty-five hundred dollars out of their office supplies into the part time line.
Well, that was for the nurse.
What she spoke of earlier was for the salary ordinance amendment for her grant funds that was left.
The fifteen thousand dollars.
The fourteen five.
Okay, yeah.
So the salary ordinance is we can't, you have to approve the salary ordinance for us to be able to pay it out in the payroll. So she's wanting to use the rest of that grant fund in that line for her part time. But then to supplement up for some of the other difference that she has is this, my understanding is this office supplies that she's transferring in and it's out of category.
When I wrote the initial grant budget, it, it was for very standard stuff. Here at the end of the grant, we don't need more supplies. We just need to pay the part time vaccine administration nurse. Are we, we're, we're looking at the same thing, correct?
We are. I just wanted to show something.
Okay.
You're fine. You're good. So anybody have any questions for Kelly?
We do need another motion.
So do we need a motion?
You think, you think it's getting cold here? Well.
Trying to get us out of here. Freeze everybody out.
I think we approve.
Shouldn't ask that question.
I mean, no, the forty-five, but we have approved the fourteen five.
Very good. Do I make sense in what I was doing?
Yes.
Thank you. So yeah, this is the transfer portion of the same thing. The first part of it was the salary ordinance amendment, which we approved. This is the transfer approval for the same amount. I have a motion to approve.
I'll move.
Also moved by Tom, second by Tony. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Same sign? Thanks, Kelly. Appreciate it. Sorry about the confusion. Right. Dan?
He's a slave.
Hey, good morning.
Good morning.
You know, I was looking at this and I look at all these big numbers and I'm trying to transfer thirty-five hundred and I'm like, why do they even want me over here? And so the answer's simple. One or more of you has a man crush on me and there's no other explanation whatsoever. I'm looking at you, Darren, and I'm looking at you, Tom. This is only forty-five hundred dollars of office machine money that I am willing to transfer internally. This is no new money. This is to refresh our computer system and this is something that Dale and I have always worked together on. I texted him before this meeting and he gave me the thumbs up. We can get from one category to the next. Whatever works for you. It's kind of like end of the year budgeting. I don't like to ask for money. So for this kind of thing. Hey, Mr. Sprinkle, how many times have I been over here in the last twenty years?
Well, every November, December.
Twice.
I don't know, Tom. I think we need better explanations.
Okay, that's good enough. It's perfectly fine. Listen, if it helps my people, I'll come over every meeting, so.
Hardware or software?
It's hardware and we're just on a refresh cycle, you know, it's just part of the process and we, we tried a number of cases this year and we prep even more, so that's really guided some of our budgets. That's what we project them out to be.
You wear a computer out every year.
Have a number of them, you know, in different departments. It's just a forty-five hundred dollar transfer, so whatever works. You, you guys have the power here.
Mine says to buy a copier. What yours says?
That's what mine says.
That's what I pulled up, so I'm not, I'm not sure.
If we're pulled, we've got the right one.
But it's a computer instead.
It's just a computer purchase rotation or whatever.
Whatever you can get.
You owe us thirty-five hundred dollars.
Don't you, buddy?
What do you think, Tom?
Oh, good.
I might have to abstain.
Any more questions for Mr. Murray?
Thank you.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve his request?
I'll move. Did you hear that, Dan?
I appreciate you, yes.
I'm going to second it.
Our motion by Darren, I have a second by Tom Schaefer.
The rest of us will hold now.
We're, we're the new guys, kind of sort of so.
Maybe vote.
Yeah, so all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Same sign? Thanks, Dan. Appreciate it.
In regards to what you're referring to in the copier, that's in the four D you transferred. So you guys jumped out. What he's referring to was the prosecutor piece at the bottom. What you guys are referring to the copier is the four D that was next to mine. You're welcome.
Yeah, there we go.
So if you want to jump back up to four D in regards to the copier, that's. In child support.
Thank you for keeping it straight on that.
This one.
We were at four D and then he jumped out.
Thousand dollar one for.
Went to the other.
I skipped to the other one.
Skip to the other one.
Because I was last on that one, right?
Yes. Well, why do them together? So this is the copier from four D.
Oh, it's down here.
Yes.
What's this?
So this is the copy machine. This is what he just asked.
I'm very sorry and I should have known Marilyn was on it. This is office machines, just internal. Not sure how that copy machine is, but those are one of my least favorite things to ask for because. About altogether, but my child support money is wholly dedicated to child support. So the child support money is reimbursable at sixty-sixty. Black Friday discount on this, if you will. But am I saying that wrong?
No, you're fine.
But yeah, that's, that's our child support.
So trade it, trade the old one in or was it?
Yeah, we, we do whatever we can to capture the value on that, but there's only so many vendors to work with.
Do, do you have one already chosen? Do you have the invoice for it?
I better be careful. They choose them, I don't. What do you want? Would be dishonest with you if I got into.
No, no, I was just like, I mean, do you already have it already quoted to you?
That is, yes. That's my understanding. Otherwise it wouldn't be quite so specific.
Right, okay.
That's my understanding. Different, I'll let you know. Put that, put it together, put in front of it.
Yeah, I just didn't know if somebody quoted you something and this was covering that quote, you know what I mean? Any questions?
Could be wrong.
I'm going to give you a thousand dollars. That's if for thirty-five.
Any more?
For thirty-five. But we did that one.
Part of the reason is people were dealing with it and that's whole. Partly many times. Information.
Yeah, thank you.
Any additional questions? Transfers for the copy machine for forty. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
All right.
Motion by Mike Sprinkle. Do I have a second?
Dinner's eleven thirty.
Not only that, I know you have some outside projects you need to get done, so I'm trying to make this as fast as possible.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Tony Dunsen. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Same sign? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you so much. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Make sure Dan's not on here again. No, I'm just kidding. Weights and measures. Looks like they had some additional supplies.
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Mike Sprinkle, second.
Second.
Second by Marilyn McCollough. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Same sign? Motion approves. Airport, they're moving money from storage building repair to fuel. They, I know they sold a lot of ag fuel this year and they can't, they weren't keeping up with the budget, so they're transferring to cover. Motion approved by Marilyn McCollough. I have a second. Second by Tom Schaefer. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Same sign? Motion passes unanimously. Right. Office supplies solely in water. Got a chance to review that? Phil?
That was just strictly going to a group insurance versus.
Or dependent.
All right, so move.
So move by Tony Dunsen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mike Sprinkle. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Same sign? Motion passes unanimously. All right. County clerk, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars for postage.
Seventy-seven cents.
So it was exact to the. You can see it was transferring to cover the, the name in preparation for the. Motion, motion by Tom Schaefer to approve. Do I have a second? Second by Marilyn McCollough. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Same sign? Motion carries unanimously. In your packet, you have Davis Martin Joint County Parks and Recreation Board stuff and fund balances. Anything else from the public or any other comments?
Just want to make a quick comment on our body cam project that we, we've been going on due to. IT problems and supply chain problems and other things. It's looking like it's not going to be implemented until January. So with that being said, I've not spent that money out of that account. And I know there's not enough money in next year's account, so we're trying to decide if I can get it in Camber, if I can get the bill now, get it paid before we have to do all that. I'm just making you aware that there's that issue. I, I don't think it's a big deal. I'm not.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make that work.
Thanks.
Yes, love. We're in the loop. That's right. Appreciate it, Gary. Anything else?
Let me see.
Yes.
Had an executive session Thursday of last week. The only thing. Statement normally that we make right after that is the only thing that was discussed within that meeting, that which was advertised. Go ahead and I'm making that statement, just as a. If, if that's my understanding, I was actually not present, so.
I can confirm that comment. I was, we were there, so.
And then the follow up from that, I, I thought was very positive. I thought that. Well, to make sure. Got the information. Prospects.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. I have a motion to adjourn. So move by Tony Dunsen. Do I have a second? Second by Darren Holder. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion. We're, we have stuff to sign, so if you'd stick around for a second.
Yeah.
Thanks, everyone.